It is now seven forty-six. We'll start with our city council meeting. Kelly, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Lapine.
Present.
Counselor Walker.
Present.
Counselor Yoder.
Present.
Counselor Spencer is excused. Counselor Solis.
Present.
Counselor Sebold.
Present.
Counselor Townsend.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there any amendments or changes to the agenda? None? Great. Uh, is there any, there's a visitor presentation? Steve Worthington, are you there and ready?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm, I'm present and ready and whatever you'd like.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for having me on your agenda tonight. We just recently, actually, it was yesterday that we started the first review on the recruitment for your new city administrator. I have prepared some materials for you over the course of yesterday and this morning. There are two sets or two pieces to those materials. And I sent them to your staff about mid-afternoon. The information is very fresh. As a matter of fact, your most recent applicant was eleven o'clock this morning. And I just want to see if you confirm that you have those materials. One is labeled the City Administrator Outreach Summary for the City of Madras. Does that, is that something you have in front of you?
Yes.
All right, very good. So I'm not sure if I will be able to share a screen successfully. I have multiple screens here, but I can try and share it, or I can just discuss it. I think that's... Shall I launch into talking about that one briefly?
Yes, please.
All right. Well, this represents or demonstrates to you the outreach that we have done. It shows the areas that we've placed ads. These are publications and job boards. They, many of them are a national outreach just by their nature, some such as the Association of Idaho Cities is targeted. League of Oregon Cities, of course, certainly is on that list, is, is the Association Washington Cities. They each maintain a job board that is specific to their areas. Others like this International City County Management Association is a national paid service that we place ads with. But that's to give you an idea what some of the outreach has been. It does include things like Facebook and LinkedIn as well. And we have done, we have done some boosting of impressions, and you have some measurements or metrics on the number of clicks and impressions that have been received media that allows us to count such things. In addition to that, we have mailed eight hundred and forty announcements to, I believe it's eleven or so, let's see, thirteen, I guess it is, states, for the most part, western states. And over the course of the approximately five weeks that we've been advertising, we have also emailed out a bit over ten thousand email outreaches to various lists that we've accumulated over time. These are city administrators, city managers and such, to association list and all. The idea is we're trying to get an impression in everyone who has, who was on that list of at least three times, three times seeing, hearing about the opportunity of Madras. Wanted to show you that. That's been, what's been occupying the last four or five weeks. And out of that, we've had twenty-one applications. As I mentioned, the, the, one of which was about eleven AM this morning. I have another sheet that I think is in front of you as well. That's, it's a transmittal memo and the status of Madras City Administrator Recruitment. And a summary of that. And it talks about how we've received twenty-one applications. Nine of those are individuals that are experienced as a chief appointed official, which is essentially what the city administrator's role is. One is an assistant city, I believe it's assistant city manager in this case. And seven have experience as a municipal or county level department director. I also have some aggregate information about just the education, and this information is there to do two things, give you a feel for what this looks, list looks like. At this stage, I, I don't, it would not be appropriate for us to talk about in any individual in a public meeting at this point. They have not released their information for that yet. And, but in the aggregate, we have, of those twenty-one people, nineteen have bachelor's degrees, twelve have MPAs, three have additional masters, several two have double masters, and there's one PhD in public administration in that group as well. And you can see the states that we have listed, including eight applications from residents of Oregon, two from Washington, two from Wyoming, two from Utah, two from Florida, and one each for Kentucky, Kansas, Pennsylvania, Utah, and excuse me, Michigan, I believe it is.
Michigan?
No, in any case. Additionally, we've identified there's an opportunity in the application to submit veterans' credentials in order to qualify for Oregon's veteran preferred program. And three of these applications have done that. And so we have followed the protocol for that. And at some point, I think you may be familiar with it, or we can certainly describe that at some point as we move forward with things too. Of the total applications, I've selected eight for screening interviews with me. Those will be scheduled over about the next ten days. And I'm still looking at three others that are on the cusp, so to speak, about whether they're, they're invited to a screening interview. We'll continue to monitor and look at new applications that are coming in. And I'll continue to do that until we're, until it's just not practical for us to do that any, any longer. And that's usually about four days or so before the executive work session, the executive session where I will be coming in to meet with you and review individually with each of you, each of the applications and the interview materials that I've, I'll be preparing as well. So, and we have that currently scheduled for August twenty-third. I understand that there is some interest in potentially changing that date. And I, as of about five PM this afternoon, also have an interest in changing that date. So I recently had a, a death in my family, not my wife or sons, but a, a near relative. And I just heard at five o'clock that that funeral is scheduled in Seattle at five PM on the twenty-third. So I have a conflict that I have with that date that has come up, so. So I'd like an opportunity to talk about somewhere during the course of this evening, what the options are about moving forward with that. But I wanted to get that on the table for all of us and, and see how we can talk about the scheduling as a result. If we can't move the date, there's other options as well.
Sorry to hear that, Steve. I think the idea of changing the date is new to some of us up here on the on DIAZ. But yeah, we have, definitely we can entertain different time or date options.
Can I ask a quick question? Something I was gonna ask anyway. As far as our September thirteenth and our whole arc, is there any possibility of moving that up? I know we're all trying to coordinate our schedules. When you came up with that week, was that the best as far as the critical path for the process? Or were you working against your own constraints as far as your own scheduling? Were you trying to be respectful to our constraints? I just wanted to understand the reasoning behind that week specifically. And if there is a possibility to move it up, I mean, there could be a synergy with Labor Day or something like that. Maybe people want to come in and check out the city. I just wanted to throw that out there to discuss.
Right. So there is some reasoning. There's a number of things that come into play with setting those dates. It's a mixture of the things that you discussed. I do have some scheduling constraints. Most of those have happened actually after that date. So I wanted to have that final interview no, no later than those dates. I have some other activities going on. I need to check my schedule. It's available, and I can do that here shortly. And then it was also looking at some of, of your needs as well. And then finally, from whenever we have the executive work session, when you select who you wish to interview, it's gonna take about two and more likely, three weeks for us to get ready for that. And it's, so that's part of what drives this, is when that, when that date comes up, we end up needing at least two weeks and perhaps three weeks to put this together. And the reason we need that time is we'll go to all of the candidates you've selected, and we'll start gathering their references, and we'll do a background check. And it takes two to three weeks for that process to run its course. Additionally, if you do have out of town travel, it's a little cheaper for you as well if they're booking, you know, two weeks ahead as opposed to a shorter term. So that's sort of the reasoning. We can, we can look at some level to change that date. And I, I know this, your staff had worked to coordinate some, I think I had offered oh, four or five different date options at that time, and it was just a, a matter of coordinating which ones fit best at the time. We potentially can look at that process again. I would suggest we think about the twenty-third, and that'll help us figure out what the date range is for the final interview, if that makes sense to you. So.
You're talking about looking at the current twenty, that's the date that you want to change, though, is August twenty-third?
I, I'm sorry. I was having a hard time hearing you with that. I've got my video or my audio up full, but it was just a little muffled. Could you repeat that?
August twenty-third is the date you want to change?
August twenty-third is the date that I'm not available, yes. I, I, for me to be able to participate, it would need to change. We can bring another consultant in to either work that day or actually take over the project.
What are the other four dates that you had in mind?
The other potentials for the work session would be the twenty-first, twenty-second. Possibly the August eighteenth. That's a little tight for you and for me. And I say that because if it is the twenty-first or twenty-second, I will get to your staff and then turn to you a printed packet of the materials on the eighteenth of August. And you would have the weekend to read that packet. It's roughly, approximately rather, ten pages per person. And so you'd, right now, it's gonna be about eighty to ninety pages.
The twenty-second is the city, United City Council meeting. I think twenty-first might be easier for the staff and council. Is that agreed?
Yes.
Are you thinking like during the work session or evening?
We would make that the work session.
There you go.
We would make that an executive work session, so a closed session. And I would estimate it to take ninety minutes or perhaps a little bit long.
Let, let's do it in the evening then.
Agreed.
Not during the noon.
Does everyone, is the rest of the council good with that, that evening of the twenty-first?
I am.
Christie, is that good for you? Jeremy?
I believe that works.
Steve, I think twenty-first is a winner.
Okay, well, great. Well, thank you very much. I really appreciate your, your flexibility on this and any case, appreciate your understanding as well. We'll, we'll do that.
Can I clarify with council? So that day, are you guys saying we're adding that in the evening and still carrying on with the work session during the day?
No. I would almost defer to staff on that. Do you have discussions already been had that a work session should occur during our typical noon hour on Monday, the twenty-first?
I don't recall what we have on the agenda proposed. Do you have it there?
I do. I have it up. So right now, it looks like the discussion for the work session is gonna include the animal ordinance review for livestock, the ordinance for the right-of-way licensing, and the code position discussion.
Oh, I think those are good topics.
So I would say let's keep that noon work session and have the evening work session.
Agreed. Okay, yeah, we'll maintain that. And I'll bring coffee in for Jennifer.
I don't think coffee is the concern.
So, so Mayor, was that the, in terms of the executive session that we were discussing, is that in the evening or is that during the day?
That'll be in the evening.
In the evening? Thank you.
Yeah, we have a separate work session during the day where Jennifer's gonna kick my butt.
All right. Well, I'll just make, I'll make travel, uh, travel plans accordingly, and maybe I'd need to bring you coffee. All right. Do we want to talk a bit about alternate dates for the final interview process? And, and I can describe the process a bit more, just as well if you would like.
So do we need to alter those dates as well?
That's up to you. Those dates don't need to be altered on my behalf.
I think they're already set in everybody's calendars. If, if they don't need to be changed, is everybody good with those dates?
Clarified. That's September thirteenth in the evening for the meet and greet, and all day the fourteenth for interviews. And everybody here can make it. I know one of our counselors that isn't present might not, but everyone here can make it, correct?
I thought you retired from that business. All he got was a part.
I, I want to stress again, I know I've stressed this before. I won't, I won't beat a dead horse too much. But I think that this is the single biggest decision and hire that we will ever make on our time on city council. And I think that un, unless it's a family or medical emergency or something, let's all plan on being here. Believe it or that.
Those dates have already been sent out, so unless there's already some major conflict, then I think we should stick with that. Okay. There you go, Steve.
Okay, very good. So we're set for the thirteenth and fourteenth. We'll continue with that as, as previously booked. We're moving to the twenty-first in the evening. I'll make the arrangements appropriately. And we'll have a packet to you sometime on Friday, August eighteenth, so that you can look at that over the weekend in preparation for the meeting on the twenty-first. There, we have also distributed questions to you with Charo's help and Christie's help. We don't want to talk about those in open session since they would be interview questions for candidates, and should, everyone should have the same knowledge of those, which is to say, not much ahead of time knowledge. And we'll do that in executive session on any feedback you have there. We've also actually provided for a written feedback loop on those. And Charo, I believe, is coordinating that for everyone. And we anticipate talking about the design on the twenty-first as well, the final interview design, fine tuning that. It's, it's best to fine tune the design when you know how many candidates you're inviting, because the design can change, if, depending upon the number. And so I would anticipate right now that you may have at least, at least three finalists. We encourage you to get to that number, and probably no more than five. That's, that's sort of the sweet spot. And who the people are, we can talk more about that on the twenty-first. But I just want to plant those seeds now. And I can explain the reasons for that when we, when we're together. Let's see, the, I think that covers a fair amount of things. We are also anticipating, though it's, depending, depends on the design you'd like, that there would be two sets of panels, mixed panels of various community leaders and potentially other interested parties. I think Christie's been working on some potential folks there. Those will facilitate those groups, and we have a way in our, in the proffman design to bring their information to you, so it's most helpful. But it certainly places that decision on your shoulders as to who is appointed, so. Gosh, I just wanted to touch some highlights, and then if you have any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to answer them.
Steve, I just want to confirm that on, in our work session, executive session on the twenty-first, that we will see all the applicants, not just your recommendation.
You'll see all the applicants. There'll be more information about the ones that I have interviewed. The other ones that I have not interviewed, you'll see their application materials. And, and then we can discuss them if you'd like to ask. Is, you know, so-and-so wasn't selected for interview, would, you know, why is that? I can, I can certainly talk about that with you. So, but that would be the appropriate place for that. And if you want to have some, someone added, there's still a little bit of time to add one or two at, at that point. But let's save that until we have the comparison to make. That, that's really will help, so.
I don't know if it's premature to ask this. I was just curious, as you're reading like the cover letters, are you getting the impression that, I mean, twenty-one applicants is a good amount? I'm, I'm pleased. Is it the Central Oregon lifestyle? Is it our pay rate? Are you getting a sense of what's drawing so many applicants?
That's a little early to tell. So there's, to be honest right now, it's just a little early to tell. When I have my interviews, I'll have a better sense of motivations.
Fair enough.
So, all right, good. How else can I help?
Anybody have any other questions? Any from the staff?
Right. I do want to keep in mind, we're gonna be needing to keep everything confidential in that work session about the applicants. So we need to get their, their approval before we go, go public. And also, okay, great. Well, if there's nothing else, I'll look forward to seeing you on the twenty-first. And again, thank you so much for that kindness. Appreciate that.
Good. Thank you, Steve.
All right. Take care.
I F O pod and forgot to do public comments, and Jennifer did not catch me. Amazing. So is there anybody who on Zoom had, liked to do a public comment? Kelly? Mr. Semley, do you have anything you'd like to say? None from our commissioner. Okay, moving on. We'll go into our public hearing. Okay, supplemental budget hearing. This time, open the hearing at eight oh eight. You get a staff report by Rose, please.
Thank you, Mayor. As you can read in the resolution, which will follow it, kind of outlines the reasons for why we're doing this budget resolution. We are short-staffed a little bit in finance and a little bit more than that in police. And so we have a little bit extra room in the budget in the personnel category that we would like to transfer down to personnel service, I'm sorry, in the personnel services category that we would like to transfer down to materials and services. So that will enable us to have the funds to hire some temp help to help the police department get catch, get caught up on their administrative duties. The officers have been doing a wonderful job trying to cover, but it's gonna really give them a lift if they have some more help at that front desk. And in the finance department, I'm trying to do two jobs, and audit season's coming up, and we have a lot of projects that I'm gonna need some help with, so that everything is still processed timely and accurately and for your for the best way for the city to be operated. So what I'm proposing is that we get my page open here. I would like to transfer forty-five thousand dollars from the police fund from personnel services to materials and services. And in the finance fund, thirty thousand dollars from personnel to materials and services.
Okay, is that the end of your report, Rose, on that?
What's that?
Is that, that the end of your report?
Yes.
Okay, in that point, in that case, is there any comments from the public? None from Zoom? Council, you have any questions or comments? Or councilors, not opposed to our council? None? Okay, and this time, I'll close the hearing at eight eleven. There's no action required at this time. Formal action will be done by resolution. Now back to the regular agenda. And on to the supplemental budget, resolution eighteen dash two zero two three.
If you'll entertain a motion, I move to approve resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion and a second. Resolution, is this a roll call vote? It's a roll call vote. So Kelly?
Sorry, I did not have that. Okay, Counselor Walker. Counselor Yoder.
Here. Yes.
Counselor Solis.
Aye.
Counselor Sebold.
Aye.
Counselor Townsend.
Yes.
Thank you. It passes unanimously.
Thank you. Counselor Yoder, glad you're awake.
I am.
Okay. Madras Airport apron and fencing improvements. Derek?
All right, so this is for Century West Engineering, their cost for the apron project. This is, this project's been before you guys several times. Their costs are gonna be two hundred and forty-six, two sixty-three. And on seven twenty-five, twenty-three, council already approved accepting the grants for this project and J L's construction bid. So now staff is recommending approving task order five from Century West. An independent fee assessment was conducted to ensure that these costs were fair. And that estimate came out at three hundred and twenty-one thousand nine sixty, so this is a pretty good deal. The city also currently has a master agreement with Century West to provide the engineering services for projects at the airport. That's it.
Does it need a motion on this?
I move that council approved task order number zero five with Century West Engineering for apron and fencing improvements at the Madras Municipal Airport in the amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty thousand.
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Thank you, Derek. Airport appraisal, will it continue?
All right, so the new appraisal was just conducted. The last one was completed in August two thousand and nineteen by Cushman and Wakefield for the Madras Airport Industrial Park. The parcels analyzed were from one acre to over two hundred acres. They also consisted of finished, meaning sites with full infrastructure, having all utilities, and unfinished industrial parcels, meaning sites with no infrastructure. The appraisal took into account current trends, demographics, population, employment, outlook. And the concluded land values in the two thousand and twenty-three ranged from forty cents for unfinished sites to one thirty-five for finished sites. And the appropriate rent for finished airside sites was determined to be fifteen to nineteen cents. And this is just to accept the appraisal, and staff is recommending that.
Okay, can I introduce?
I make a motion. That council accept the appraisal completed on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second. I have a motion and a second by Counselor Walker. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? She knows. Thank you. Any other business before going to reports? Okay. Is anybody here for the police department? No? Okay. What's that? Okay. Finance, Crystal. No, I'm sorry, Rose.
We are trying to keep up with our month-end processes that we're doing right now. And since it's getting close to the end of August, it's hard to believe, but that's the deadline for any monies that we receive that need to be applied to receivables for last fiscal year. So I'm chasing loose ends and trying to track down billings and status and make sure everyone's paying what they need to pay. And then the thought crossed my head last night that audit is coming up faster than the steam train can go. So it's gonna be really interesting in about a month and a half when the auditors are here. So I'm looking forward to having a consultant on board soon to help me with some of these things. And like I said, I don't want anything to fall by the wayside, so we're trying to keep everything up timely and as accurate as possible. I'm always available if anyone I'm always available if anyone has questions.
Thank you. Uh, Nick?
While going on the department, one of the things that we're working on right now is we had a forty lot subdivision filed off of Grizzly. And, uh, all but one of those lots will be developed with fourplexes. Uh, the state's awarded, uh, I think it's about six million dollars for the development. It's a tax credit development, so affordable housing development. And, uh, they've already submitted their preliminary site plan, architectural plans, they're nice looking fourplexes. So, uh, the developer said, um, we really would like to work with, uh, staff to get their site plans pre-approved so they can move forward the, uh, with the zoning review process rather quickly. So they have about three different designs or layouts. We'll pre-approve those so that when they file them, they can just identify if it's A, B, or C, if you will, sail through the process. And, um, literally, they said, we hope we can, you can beat the permitting process and then, uh, the, the city bends process. I said likely. And, uh, they said that, uh, they have, you have to report back to D L C D apparently on some of this funding. And, uh, they were really, uh, looking forward to communicating, uh, getting through our land use and the site plan approval process in, uh, what may be less than three months. So, um, a lot, a lot of work over the last five years to really expedite our permitting process and create predictability. And so it's just another project that's demonstrating some of the, the wisdom and the ability to get in and out of land use and obtain building permits rather quickly. Nonetheless, uh, that's a, that's about a hundred units of housing that, that'll be really needed in our community. Initially, they were concerned about whether there was actually a need in our community. And I said, I don't think you need to worry about that. So, um, there'll be a, a, about a one acre park, as I recall, in there that we'll be working with them to get some preliminary improvements on. So, uh, really a, a neat project. It'd be a good, good case study for us to move forward and, uh, I think a, just a good example of, uh, leadership from the council. So, uh, that concludes my report.
Michelle?
Um, tonight, I was just going to report, we have a couple pre-construction meetings happening this, this week. One for our odor control project, so we can get it underway. Um, and then we're going to meet onsite, we're going to also be meeting with the developer that's develop, developing off of Sun Drive and J Street. They are having, um, we're having a pre-construction meeting for them. They're extending their sewer to their development. So they have sewer. We have our McTaggart lease property is out for advertisement, so we'll be getting back, um, proposals on that. And as Nick said, we have some developments that we are reviewing, more than, more than one. So that's all I got.
Derek? Derek?
All right, I got a good update for this week. So instead of mowing, it's been a lot of pork lifting, moving a lot of stuff at the airport. Some real exciting news. The, uh, storage container that left the airport property this morning, so we're moving along.
Sweet.
That was a big step. On a real note, we have a airport, um, meeting this Thursday, special meeting. The, the real point of this is to get three leases done. So this has been a lot of work, um, since I started here. And so hopefully we can move those forward and finally get them wrapped up. So pretty exciting. That's it.
Great, thank you, Derek. Christie?
Yes, just an update on the recruitments. We are, we're in the final stages of hiring our, uh, last officer. And then all of our vacancies will be filled as far as officers go. On Monday, we'll be interviewing a backup, uh, potential candidate as well, in case anyone drops out of the process in the meantime. And, and we have sent off the, uh, job description to the consultant for evaluation for the wage scale for the evidence tech position. Once that's completed, we'll be ready to post that position as well. The applications close next Monday for the Public Works Director. That'll be our initial review of the process. That position will be open until filled. Uh, also in Public Works, we have advertised for the new position this year, which is the combined position that does, um, both street maintenance and building maintenance. And we've received some applications and we'll be moving forward with interviews this Friday. And let's see, the last thing I wanted to just talk about was, um, Mr. Worthington mentioned that we would be doing some work with regard to the formation of some panelists, some panelists for your city administrator interviews. So if you have some ideas, if you want to send those our way, we can certainly get, um, some recommendations together and we can present those to you at a later date. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Jeremy? Thank you. Kelly?
I just was going to give you an update that I met with the three different contract management companies. And last Tuesday, I did a demo of two of them and my recommendation to the department head, um, in the meeting. And we all agreed on one company. So we're going to move forward with ContractSafe. And that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Walker?
Thank you, uh, staff, for doing such a good job on, uh, the recommendations for the M R C and the herd. Appreciate that. And, uh, you guys did a great job. And, uh, can't say thank you to the police chief, but I will record that we say thank you for, uh, working hard on that. And of course, everyone else that, uh, is involved with that. And, uh, Michelle, for all your hard work. Thanks for keeping the city going. Appreciate that. And I have no other reports.
Thank you. Counselor Yoder?
I have nothing to report, but I'm, well, okay. I am going to be gone for a couple of weeks, but I will be on Zoom or whatever I can be. So for family things, so, but anyways.
Thank you. Counselor Solis?
I wanted to just say sorry for not being at the city county meeting, uh, last week. Had a death in the family, so was dealing with that and did not attend that or the C Y C board meeting for this month. I know there was a couple of items on there that they were going to be discussing, one of them being the regional large lot industrial program. And they were also going to be discussing a houselessness request. I don't have any further information about those, but I can get some from Tammy Bany, the executive director. So I will do that. I also wanted to follow up on a couple of the comments I made from the last meeting. Just want to keep this fresh and try to push this forward. I'd like to look at what we need to do to do an R F P for salary consultant. I'd like the direct staff to start looking into that and get that moving forward. And I also think we absolutely need to start conversations with the Chamber of Commerce. Just from our budget committee meeting, we discussed setting some deliverables for them to receive funding in future years. We need to have those conversations now before it's too late so that we can set the deliverables. They have opportunity to meet them before the next budget cycle. And there was conversation at that point in time about inviting the county to participate in those conversations if they wish. I'd like to extend that invitation to them. And so have staff formally do that. And I know Commissioner Simlink is online, so, um, please keep that in mind for your future commissioner meetings that we would like to, uh, have you participate in those discussions. And that is all I have.
I would like to echo, uh, Counselor Solis's comments regarding the Chamber of Commerce. I'm very interested in that as well. Prior to our meeting, I asked our lawyer, our legal, Jeremy, if he could start providing the council, like monthly, uh, reports on all of our lawsuits we're involved in and kind of create a threat assessment as far as, so we understand the potential liability or risk for each one. The goal of that is just to give us a snapshot. If one of us has a question, we can escalate it and Jeremy can go more into detail. So it's, it's more of a snapshot. We understand that those legal situations are fluid, so it's not meant to be a mechanism to try to hold him to it. Obviously, he doesn't have control over that, and I did want to mention that as well. Beyond that, uh, I'm glad that this is our first meeting that we all sat up here in the horseshoe, and I liked it. I actually, uh, think it was good. I don't know how everybody else feels, but, um, from a safety point of view, if nothing else, I, I like this better. And that is all I have to report.
Counselor Townsend?
I have nothing. I want to, uh, extend my appreciation also to Nick and Fatma for going through the, uh, M R C information with us extensively. I know we had a lot of questions and a lot of detail here, but it was really appreciated. And I don't want to know what we're being sued for. I think we, I think-
Ignorance is not bliss.
Okay, I want to say this. I think it's important that council not create extra work unless it's a group consensus of wanting the information. So maybe that's a discussion for another time. But we want to be careful about adding extra work to staff if it's not something that, it would benefit us in any way.
Fatma, thank you for filling in again and staying here later when, you know, dragging on with the rest of us. Thank you for that.
Could I add, congratulations, Jennifer?
I have nothing to report, so unless anybody else has anything, um, we're going to end, adjourn this meeting at eight twenty-eight. Take a few minutes breaks for executive session.